I'd like to call to order the June 12th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Ms. DeSico.
Here.
Mr. Wozniak.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Secretary Moore is absent, and Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First item is approve of the agenda. If there are no additions or corrections.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by DeSico. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the May 22nd meeting. So moved.
Support.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This evening, we have five site plans that we'll be entertaining. The first one, Site Plan Number 17-24 Fernando Casasanta, Northwood Investments. Is the applicant here? Okay, if you could come up. Name and address, and what you're requesting of this body this evening. Why don't you just speak into the microphone, please?
Fernando Casasanta, 57841 Brookfield Way, Washington Township.
Okay.
My name is Bill Thompson from Lanier Associates. I'm working with Mr. Casasanta on this site plan.
Okay. Just briefly describe what you're requesting this evening.
Okay, this property is located on the northwest corner of West Star Drive and Shainer. It's one of the last lots in the West Star subdivision. It was developed 15 or 20 years ago. It's zoned industrial. Mr. Casasanta plans on putting in an industrial building with several users. You can see on the display board there. It's broken up into eight units. They can be combined, but maximum of eight units. There are sanitary, sewer, water and storm so are available to suit this, to fit the site, to serve the site. Access will be off West Star Drive.
Mr. Winn, or?
I think Julie did this review.
Oh, Julie?
Okay, as?
You need a microphone.
Okay, as Mr. Thompson indicated, this is a 25,470-foot square foot industrial building. It sits on a 1.76 acre parcel at the northwest corner of Shainer, West Star Industrial. The building meets all the zoning ordinance requirements. I had a few minor comments indicate the surface area and specifications, and I believe the engineer had that comment as well. Indicate no outdoor storage permitted on the site. Indicate lighting fixtures and details, and these are all minor comments. Building Department requires a seven-foot wide sidewalk. Fire Department also had some comments and Public Works, but all are minor in scope, and this is typical industrial building of the site.
Great, thank you. To the board, any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Dallo.
To Mr. One, is the building in Light Industrial, can they have a retail in the front of any kind, and the storage in the back? Is that allowable?
They're allowed, in Light Manufacturing, they are allowed some retail uses. So, for example, if a restaurant was interested, they could put a restaurant in there. It's really a multi-tenant industrial building. I think you'd find mostly industrial tenants, but since it has Shainer access, they could put some retail uses there as well. It is allowed in the LM District.
It's, I mean, the building is beautiful. It's a beautiful building, beautiful setup. It's just the name of Light Industrial for such a building, it's kind of put the building down, in my opinion. And I wish it was totally commercial where I don't know how the mix of restaurant and light industry are going to work together. I wish it was just either or.
I think you'll find, Mr. Chairman, there's probably more demand right now for the Light Manufacturing space. We're seeing that, at least at the counter versus the retail, but it's flexible enough to give them that opportunity if they find a tenant they wanted that was more of a retail character.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And actually, Mr. Dallo, this type of use is becoming very popular across the country, and it's almost, it's called, almost like a flex property, that it's somewhat office, somewhat industrial, and somewhat?
And we see across the street where there's Dunkin' Donuts in the middle of something else.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that site's zoned industrial as well, but we expanded the ordinance a number of years ago to widen the scope of what we allow in industrial. And Mr. Casasanta's had this property for many years. He's done really well in this. He's done really very nice buildings in this area, so putting this building on the corner will just enhance that entire subdivision. It's very nicely done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Turner, did you have a question?
No.
Oh.
One, just a comment for Mr. Dallo, is that if you want to see this building, or this type of building that's been around for a long time, at Avon and John R., the Allen Investments property there, it's had quite a few commercial uses in the front, and then all storage in the back. As far as I know, it's been full all the time.
I'm very sure it's going to be full here also. It's just the area and the road that's in, as Shainer, and it's more into that district of commercial, but that's very nicely done.
Okay. Then other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan application Number 17-24 for Fernando Casante, Northwood Investments LLC, Lot 22, West Star Industrial Project, located on West Star Drive, north of 23 Mile Road, and west of Shainer, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
By DeSico, support by Dallo. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
And the Chair, both yes. Good luck.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Site Plan Number 17-25 Frank Martin, Dorchen Martin Associates for McDonald's. Good evening.
I brought along a few things that weren't in the packet. We can share one here. Thank you.
We can share.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have enough there?
Thank you.
My name is Frank Martin, architect with Dorchen Martin Associates in Southfield, Michigan, and I'm here on behalf of McDonald's. I was here about 11 years ago when this particular store was first put on that site at Van Dyke and 26, and at that time, it was a co-branded store, McDonald's, and a fueling station, as you probably remember. And now, the program with McDonald's and the fueling station has split up. The fueling station has been removed from the facility. The tanks are removed, canopy is removed, and McDonald's is still operating. But McDonald's, right now, throughout the country, is going through a renovation program with renovating 85% to 90% of their stores by the year 2020, and they're essentially removing mansard roofs and a lot of the 50-year-old traditional things that we have lived with over the years, and are renovating facilities and putting up new facilities that have the new design. And this particular store is going to be redesigned to just be a McDonald's, and it's about the size of a brand-new store that's being built these days. When we looked at the co-brand, and it was split up into two uses, we now combine the uses, redoing the kitchen, redoing the exterior, redoing all the restrooms. Everything's to be ADA compliant. The site, we have some changes that Glenn and I had talked about when I first contacted him. The fact that the canopy is no longer there, we don't have a need for all that asphalt or concrete in front of the facility along Van Dyke, so we have, on the site plan you can see, and on the landscape plan you can see, that that is now going to landscaping, which will be a nice addition to Van Dyke. The other side had ample room. I think two years ago, maybe, McDonald's came in for the renovation of the drive-thru, and that was constructed. And this particular store, I think, will be quite a nice improvement on that corner. It'll be the new store design, inside and outside, and we are planning on finishing our construction drawings in the next month, and they will probably start construction after applying for a permit. Construction will probably begin at the end of August. And it probably is a 45-day process. This particular one will be closed for some period of time while they redo the kitchen, and then, and get those, the site doesn't have much to be done. They'll probably do that at that time, and then possibly open up the drive-thru with a temporary, and then finish up the dining room and everything else that goes with it. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and some of the...
Before I ask Mr. Winn to comment, you know, I must, I got a comment that it's disappointing that, I mean, you were on the agenda some time ago.
Oh.
That the materials that you gave us, you know, would have been helpful to have prior to.
Oh, uh-huh.
And, you know, obviously, you've been to this community before.
Sure.
So typically understand on how we operate, so, I mean, what you're requesting is fairly straightforward, but coming to, you know, at the last minute, giving something that, you know, we're supposed to review and in some way.
That was all in your packet.
This, the materials that you gave us here?
That material was in your packet, yeah.
Yeah, that's curious.
I just brought that along just to have as a supplement. There were some additional pictures in there that could be helpful.
I'm just saying that there were materials that I didn't receive, and perhaps my packet was insufficient, but that's all right. Mr. Winn, did you review this, or?
Yeah, we had no problems. We've worked with Frank for many years, and I appreciate his willingness to make those landscape adjustments. That's going to make a huge difference on that site. I mean, the site was a clean, neat-looking site to begin with. I think this is just a huge enhancement. So, I, thanks again, Frank.
Oh, you're welcome.
To the board, any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the modified site plan for the McDonald's Restaurant at 56915 26 Mile Road, subject to the submission of a revised landscaping plan.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
And the Chair, both yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
If I could have your plans back tonight, I can stamp and sign these tomorrow, so just leave them at the front when you're done. Thank you.
Okay, next item is a public hearing on Site Plan Number 17-18, Special Land Use Number 6, Rich Lawrence, Max Convenience Stores. I'll ask the Acting Secretary to read the notice that was published.
Yes, Charter of, Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant Rich Lawrence, Max Convenience Stores LLC, 935 East Talmadge Avenue, Akron, Ohio, 44310. The proposed use is a convenience store with gas station. The location is vacant land, northeast corner of Van Dyke and 22 Mile Road, Site Plan Number 17-18 SLU-6. The legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, June 12th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary, published May 28, 2017. Eighty-four property owners and three applicants were notified on May 26, 2017.
Ms. Dennewith, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. And could you explain the uses under the present zoning, and if this special land use request is appropriate to the district?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this zoning district is AC2, which is set forth under Zoning Ordinance Section 10.40. Specifically, this is a special land use pursuant to Section 10.40B, so long as the general, or underneath the General Review Standards of Section 13.01, and specifically as to gasoline stations, 13.21. This is an appropriate use.
Okay, great, thank you. The board did receive two emails on this request from a Julie Schmidtler and a Jeffrey Schmidtler at 278722 Mile Road, arguing that this wasn't a good use for that corner. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or the representative will give reasons for their request. The commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be then open up to the public to ask any questions or offer their opinions, and then finally allow the petitioner to respond to any questions. At this point, is the petitioner or representative here? And if I could get your name and address, and then when you've concluded, to sign in, please.
Otis Carter, 42649 Capitol, Novi, Michigan. I am here in place of Rich Lawrence. He's not here today. I am with Circle K. I am the real estate manager for Michigan and Ohio region. And what we are proposing is a fuel convenience store project with a building that's about 5,333 square feet, somewhere in that range, just under two acres. We are moving into Michigan, or trying to move into Michigan. Circle K has basically covered the southeast, southwest of the United States, and some of the northeast. Haven't really done a lot in the Midwest, other than Ohio. Looking to expand into Michigan and northwest Ohio now. We think we have a great product. We think that the project would be great for the community. We're not building temporary-looking, you know, lower-scale-type facilities. We are building facilities that are meant to be long-term, and to be in the community, and to represent the community well, so with your approval, we would like to try to move forward with that.
Okay. To the board, do any commissioners have a question? The petitioner?
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I have a question about the actual plan. I know we all want to be, our buildings to shine and be brilliant examples for our community, but I'm wondering if, when you look at the plan, if this is going to be too bright, too well-lit, because when you're looking at the light plan, you have six wall lights, seven floodlights, and 22 lights on the canopy. Does that seem excessive, or is that pretty typical, and can we reduce that so it's not blinding you as you're driving down Van Dyke?
Right. So, most of the lights are directional LED lights, so they all shine down. They won't glare out anyway. Most of them are directional, so it's meant to be bright from a safety standpoint, up under the canopies and right next to the building, but it should not glare out into the community or to the adjoining properties.
I'm not a lighting expert. Mr. Winn, I mean, what do you think?
Two comments. I think maybe if you could maybe just revisit the number of lights, Mr. Carter, under the canopy. I think that's the most, the photometric plan shows that the most intensity's under the canopy.
Right.
And Mr. Turner and I were talking today about it. There's two fixtures under the canopy, Otis. One, which shows a drop fixture.
Okay.
And one is recessed. We certainly want the recessed, because the drop fixtures, the light becomes a little more visible.
Right.
So, I think the specification should be the recessed only, and if they could revisit maybe a few less under there, or give us some indication, I think that's the concern.
I mean, we want it to be safe, but it just seems like it's going to be too bright, too brilliant, too blinding.
And it's only in that one little pocket, right under there, so I think if we could maybe revisit that just modestly, I think that would help.
Okay. Any other questions?
We'll talk about it, yeah.
Chairman, these are all corporate-owned stations, aren't they? Are they 24-hour?
Yes, sir.
Business in there?
Yes, sir.
All right. You just build one in Van Dyke.
That's correct.
South of us, in here.
Just north of 696.
The building, I mean, the building, I, it's a nice building. The canopy part of it is, I think, is too many pumps. Cheaper building. On top is all aluminum, and these, the nature of the materials always fade, and it's not really what I would be looking to put in my neighborhood. And that's my opinion.
Any other questions? Mr. Wozniak?
For Mr. Winn, would we usually take a project like this and leave a parcel unidentified, like they have here in Parcel 5?
It's ready, yes, we could, was, there's no mandate that they show any plans for that. If they want to use it, they'll have to come back. Obviously, we've seen so many different versions of site plans for this site, Mr. Wozniak, and some of them utilize it, and some of them didn't.
What could that portion be used for?
Another retail building, perhaps? You know, other versions we've seen here, we think one that showed a car wash, but, you know, that, those sites have kind of particular challenges with circulation.
Have you had any conversations with the applicant with regard to use?
No, not on this one.
Applicant, do you have any ideas of what that other portion would be used for?
Well, the intent that we had was just to have it as an excess retail piece, so whether it was, and I don't have any specific uses in mind, but, you know, like a Jimmy Jones, or any type of retail, to your point, that didn't have circulation-type concerns, because a drive-thru or anything like that probably wouldn't fit on that property, so it would have to be some kind of standalone retail space. For us, it just didn't make sense for us to add on to our particular piece of property. There's no, nothing that we can really do with it, so rather than just have it sit there, we just broke it off just in case we could come up with another retail use that could go there. We didn't want to put a car wash. We think there's a significant amount of car washes already in the area, so we didn't want to add to that.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's actually a little more, their response is a little more restrained, because some of the other versions of the plans I've seen for the site had all sorts of different uses. It didn't really fit really well functionally.
Not from this applicant?
No, not from him, no, but, you know, we've worked with some other applicants that, or some other potential users, and it was just like too much on the site, so I'm glad they kind of scaled it back to something that fits, so this is kind of rare we see this, which begs the question, I'm sure.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dallo?
Mr. One, how are we treating the fences around this property? There's some parts of this project in office, and there is one project that is like resident next door. Are they building a wall in there between both of them, or how is that handled?
They don't need any sort of separation, Mr. Dallo, to the north where it abuts the office. They're the same, basically the same zoning or similar, so there's no requirement for screening. And whatever they did in the landscaping plan would have satisfied the concern to the west where it's residential. So they're, they're...
To the east?
To the east, I'm sorry, to the east.
The east of it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you for now.
Thank you.
The only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is a legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on this special land use request. At this time, anyone from the audience is welcome to come ask any questions, offer their opinion. Going once, going twice, okay. Back, Mr. Winn.
Thank you. You know, we spent a lot of time working on the site over the last couple of years, getting a part of it cleaned up. You know, the party store building has been removed, and there's been a lot of interest in the site, and I think Mr. Carter and I have worked on, talked about the site for about six months, at least, maybe more. They've been very cooperative. I, the site plan was very well done. We had two, two specific comments we wanted to share. One is, they need a parking variance. You may recall when we dealt with that site on Ryan and West Utica, the, these uses generate way more demand from the ordinance standpoint than they actually need. So, actually, I think we calculated needed 54 spaces. That's ridiculous. They don't need that many, so they will have to take a trip to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we would strongly support that. The only other site plan issue was the maneuvering aisles on either side of the pump islands, to the north and to the south. They're 37 feet wide. The standard driveway aisle width is only 24 feet wide. Now, we know they probably need more room to maneuver as you get into a pump island, but if they could just reduce that, even say five feet on each side, down to maybe 30, 32 feet, that gives you a little more landscaping space along 22 Mile Road. So, you reduce a little pave and add a little more green space, but otherwise, this site plan was exceptionally well done. It was exceptionally well-handled by the Circle K Company. It's the first time we've worked with them, and they've upgraded their elevations when we asked them to. Everything about this has been first-rate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. The petitioner have anything wish to comment? Why don't you come on up and at least answer the question, you know, in terms of narrowing the width between the pumps to?
As far as I know, I don't think there should be an issue with that, other than if there's some issue with the truck radius and the things like that, but other than that, I wouldn't see why.
We can work with them to see if we can, just, I just, just a little bit helps.
Okay, and there were no comments that you received from the Township you had any issue with? Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Basis for our motion, or for, yeah, our motion this evening, our recommendation this evening must be based on the following. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval. We may disapprove, or table to evaluate the information further. At this time, unless there are any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, just a little other question to Mr. One, or the applicant in that matter. Instead of having so many pumps and not meeting the parking, why don't we eliminate the pumps that they have compared to the other things that we approved in the town, the gas station by Kroger, they have less pumps than they, what they're putting here in this location, and that area is way busier than where this is going to be. And then you're dealing with 22, possibly that is going to expand sooner or later, so that is, I don't see a need to so many pumps right across by the neighborhood to that. So why don't we see if we could work that out where pumps would be changed for a parking so they could meet that issue? And this is, we've got to understand, this is the same property that came in for rezoning from C1 to C2, assuming to have a shopping center with a drive-thru. Now, it's not a shopping center with a drive-thru, it's a 24-hour gas station. So that's what we're looking at different, and we just approved that C1 to C2 not too long ago, so...
Well, I mean, I think, you know, the parking issue is somewhat separate in that, in a... and Mr. Wynn and I talked about this earlier today, too. A lot of the folks that go into the convenience stores are actually parking at the pumps, and that, that's not calculated into that. And so, and I don't know that under, you know, really any circumstance that the fifty, some odd spots are really appropriate to that use. In terms of whether there are enough pumps or not, I mean, that's, I guess, somewhat of a business decision.
Yeah, I'd like to address that. I think from, you know, I don't think we should set an arbitrary number, that this is the number of pumps, or that's the right number of pumps. It's all based on how a site functions. So my concern is, is the circulation, does the circulation work properly? Can they get access to the pumps conveniently? And if they can, if they can get another pump in there, I think it actually makes the circulation better, 'cause it isn't so congested. So I think, given the size of this site and how it's laid out, Mr. Dalu, I'm comfortable that the number of pumps is adequate, because the site can support the number of pumps. That's my view.
Okay, thank you. So, having asked those questions, a reminder, our, our function this evening is to, to make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to either approve this request, to disapprove the request, or to evaluate it further. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board for site plan number seventeen-dash-eighteen, SLU-six, for Rich Lawrence, Circle K, proposing a gas station with a convenience store based on the following. Introducing a gas station at this location is consistent with the predominantly retail development pattern evident at the intersection of Twenty-Two Mile Road and Van Dyke. Sufficient room is available on the site to accommodate this use and comply with all applicable zoning ordinance requirements. The addition of a gas station on this site is a complementary use to the convenience store. The gas station site is not located adjacent to any residential neighborhoods. The site plan provides convenient and safe access to Van Dyke and Twenty-Two Mile Road, and approval for the parking variance is required.
And, and recommended by the Board?
And recommended by the Planning Commission.
There you go, thank you.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any questions on the motion?
Just a comment. At the board level, we might revisit the number of pumps, Mr. Dalu, if you're concerned about it.
Thank you. Okay. If there are any, any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. DeSico?
Yes.
Mr. Dalu?
No.
Mrs. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Oppone?
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak?
Yes.
And Chair of Chess. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is site plan number one-seven-dash-two-seven, Joseph Heibel for Arby's.
Yeah, I know.
Hi, I am Joseph Heibel. I'm an architect out of Grams, Michigan. This is Eric Balance. He is a representative for the Arby's Restaurant Group. And similar to the McDonald's that was here, the existing Arby's, that's just a couple miles up the road here.
Do you want to take a little bit step forward?
Sorry about that.
Move it up, yeah.
Okay. Is that better?
That's good.
Okay. They are just going for rebranding. The existing store is staying where it is. The building footprint is remaining the same. They are just redoing the outside. They want to get rid of the old mansard-style roofs, the old, you know, old metal roof that's, you know, fifty years old. Remodel the exterior, redo the parking lot so that's ADA, meets ADA requirements, and anything else that would bring it up to current standards for the Arby's rollout.
So redoing the parking lot is part of the plan?
Um, portion of it is part of the plan. And that was discussed, we had discussions about that, and as Mr. Balance had a conversation, I believe, with, and it was told to him that it would be a separate issue, it would be handled separately, if I'm correct?
I think I can...
Yeah, Ms. Wynn.
I, that wasn't part of it. When I did go out and look at the site, I did observe the parking lots kind of crumbling in spots. There's some, it's not easy to drive through there, and I mean, frankly, it would discourage me as a customer to go there. So I don't wanna discourage them from redoing the branding of the store, especially in South Van Dyke, we're getting some new development, and I think this is exceptional design, more modern, I really like it, and we're thankful that you guys came in with this. So we would strongly encourage them, though, to revisit that parking lot, 'cause I think it's in your best interest as the owner to do that.
So I, what I would tell you is that, that we're aware of it, that we will be doing some patching, for sure, right? There's a storm drain that needs some work, and there's a couple of areas that have kind of crumbled, to your point. So those we will definitely be addressing. If we can come up with the funds to do like an asphalt cap on there, that would be our preference, but that's kind of the second part of this at this point.
Chairman, I'm, I'm able to accept that.
Okay. Any other?
No, no, no other comments necessary from our...
Questions from the board?
Just, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Wynn, there seems to be an excessive amount of drive-in on the building. Even the part where it says brick, it's ephesus brick. I mean, is that fake brick? I don't know.
Well, I don't know what ephesus brick is. I've never heard of that before. I know there's brick, and there's ephesus, but I didn't think there...
Brick-pattern ephesus. I mean, I don't know.
Oh.
Well, I mean, essentially, they put the ephesus up, and then they score it, and then they paint the grout lines to look like brick, and then the brick face itself is painted to look like brick. So it's essentially drive-in made to look like brick, as you were saying.
Seems like it's a lot of drive-in on the building.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, Mr. Dalu?
Make a motion to approve the modified site plan for Arby's Restaurant at four-seven-five-four-zero Van Dyke, seventeen-dash-twenty-seven, as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Dalu, support by DeSico. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
No.
And the Chair of Chess. Good luck.
I'll, I'll take these plans back, too, when you're done, so we can save them some more time.
Okay. Next, we have Planning Director's Report.
Chairman, two items. The first is, we've labeled this as a site plan, but it's not your traditional plan. I think most of you are familiar with that property at four-zero-two-five Auburn Road. It's the northeast corner of Auburn and Ryan. It's been vacant for a number of years. I think the last occupant was an archery range, indoor archery range. The site, you can see from the pictures, it's in a really bad shape. So this is one of our targeted blight sites. Mr. Wood, the Building Department, had done a thorough analysis of the site, identified all the code violations, and shared those with the applicant. And then even our, through Ms. Denewitz's office, we recorded those violations against the property, so people that bought it knew what they were buying. And somebody bought it with the full understanding, they had to fix it up. And we've been working with on it, and they came up with, I've hired Frank Salamoy, the local architect, he sees the exterior design, and then the, so that was fine. The only problem is, we had to figure out how we're gonna park the site.
And that's still gonna be a challenge?
It's still gonna be a challenge, but, so what we were concerned about is that the parking, the pavement on that site just bleeds right out into the road. So what you have is essentially somebody pulling in there, and then backing out into